Morning, everyone. Welcome to another Monday. Our ten o'clock business meeting. We'll just start right off. Jessica.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jessica Warren, Human Resources. I do have one request from Health and Human Services is Gina James on? Or Carol?
Yeah, she is.
So their Social Services Coordinator, Melissa Linden, has put in her resignation. She's going to the Department of Commerce in September, so they'd like to fill her position.
Okay. Gina, did you want to speak?
Hi, good morning. Yes, so I think I caught most of what Jessica, I was in transit there for a minute. Getting switched over, so we, our Social Services Coordinator has put in her notice. This position is responsible for oversight and management of a variety of local funding streams, as well as some program agreements we have with state agencies. Includes things like housing and homelessness with our Consolidated Homeless Grant and document recording fees, including point-in-time count, the Homeless Management Information System, coordinated entry, as well as just general contract management and oversight. This position also oversees the Community Development Lot Grant, the Public Services, historically Meals on Wheels, as well as the Criminal Justice Treatment Account Contract with the state and the pass-through contracts with providers. This position also oversees the Veterans Relief Fund and staffs the Advisory Board and the Advisory Board meetings, as well as processing the weekly applications for assistance with the Veterans Relief Fund. So that's kind of a broad overview. We'd like to post and get the position refilled.
I'm assuming that additional duties will be pending with the opioid settlement funds?
There is.
That person would be doing that?
Likely, yes. There's also other duties as assigned, which we know can mean other things, so.
You may.
I'm okay with going forward with that.
Some questions? So Gina, it sounds like a pretty significant job description. Is that, I would assume that there are reports that have been produced by her? Are there some we could take a look at?
There, a lot of the work is connected to specific funding or grants. So the reports are filling the grant requirements or deliverables for the different programs and funding sources. Is there specific information you're thinking of?
Well, I think I'll always put pressure on departments to try and and be, have a smaller staff if possible, you know, just trying to figure out how to do things more efficiently. And so in this case, you're having a vacancy and I'm thinking, is that, it doesn't sound like it, but is that something where you could share the load more? And I don't know how to answer that, but when you have somebody that's in this somewhat supervisory capacity, it seemed like, or semi-auditing capacity, I'd like to see as much as possible before saying, yeah, add another individual. And of course, I haven't asked who her supervisor is or how long she's been on the job or what's the reason she's leaving. Those are all in play.
Sure. I'm her supervisor and she's been with the county about almost exactly three years. And she's leaving for a position with the Department of Commerce. Actually, she'll be doing work statewide with around coordinated entry. So that's part of the work she's been doing here for us. And hopefully is taking all of our local requests up with her to the state. But it's a lot of, it's a lot of work. We do always look at, you know, what that would mean if the position is not refilled and where that work would level out. A lot of it would fall onto me probably to do. It is a full-time position and she's been busy and a lot of it does include that monitoring and auditing with providers, which can be very detailed work to do. We would, so we would like, we would like to refill this particular position.
I'm okay with it.
Yes, I'm okay. I think Commissioner Mortensen was requesting some of the reports and maybe that might be a good, you know, just a regular report back. I think most of those grants have at least quarterly reports that come from the county.
Yeah, there are some regular reports that we work on.
Would it be particularly cumbersome just to make sure we get a copy when those reports go in? Does that, would that meet your need?
Yeah, I'm hesitating because it's always hard to explain. Whenever there, whenever an employee comes in a job, they kind of define the job. I mean, there's a job description, but they actually define what the job is. And trying to find someone exactly like that is probably not the easiest thing in the world. So I did want to understand specifically, is this the kind of a job that is just elbow grease? Or is this kind of a job where there's some thought involved? And I know I've talked to Gina already years when I've asked about auditing. So you go through receipts and all that and you audit your grants. But it's different when you go actually onsite and say, you bought this under this grant? Hmm, you know, that kind of thing, just overall tightening up the loop. And when it comes to transparency, that's what I'm trying to, that's what I'm trying to hint at. So we don't just perfunctorily approve a replacement.
Yeah. I would second some of that. It depends on the talent you get in there. The job functions and the description kind of changes to the talents that you have. And that's probably what's happened here in this current instance, you have to have a level of of comfort or ease with the people that fill those jobs. And in this case, I kind of, I feel like Gina probably has a decent handle on it and so would go with it also. But it will probably change depending on the talent you get in as to what you want them to do.
Yeah, it's part of my advertisement too, that checking the box when it comes to humans is something where we tend to go for all kinds of reasons, including protecting ourselves from accusations. But anybody's been around enough. And you're the youngest guy here, so that might not apply there. Has to, has to know that attitude is very important and flexibility is extremely important also. So always trying to get one person to fit just this one job is something I would encourage everyone to think on a slightly larger scale.
So I do have one other question and that is Gina or perhaps Carol. Is this a job transfer that is the result of too many irons on the fire? That is, it's a daunting task. It's overwhelming. It sounds like her responsibility is going to be much more limited to the homeless and the counting time.
You know, I think, I think, you know, just thinking back about feedback I've received, I think it's a good variety. There's, you know, I would say it's probably half of the workload is housing and homelessness and the other half involves some other things. So I think it's a good variety of work for the, for the position. Yeah.
And she'll be commuting to Olympia or does she already live up there?
I believe it's a remote position.
Would, would you repeat her name, please? That's resigned?
Melissa Linden.
She's the one that sits with us at the Veterans Advisory Board?
That's correct.
Okay, you know, part of what still seems odd is that I barely have met Melissa Linden and maybe my memory is failing, but for the amount of work she does, I would have assumed we would have bumped into her sometime before. But you still got the answer you wanted, so.
I appreciate it.
Thanks for your time, Gina.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then that's the only request I have this morning. I do have executive sessions for collective bargaining and performance of a public employee at the end.
At the end?
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anything else for me?
Until we get to the end. Budget. How are you feeling? You feeling getting better?
I am.
Good.
Much, much, much better. So.
Mr. Chairman, I have been thinking of the order with which we listen to our department heads is, I think in this case is backwards. Before we hire people, we should make sure we have the money.
We should have the money.
Start off with the budget on Monday. Make sure.
I have some news on that. So Kathy Funk Baxter, Finance Director. I, before I came in, I ran the sales tax overview. This is the monies that are for the month of May and are dispersed in July. And so the good news is that on a sales tax front, our revenues are about 4% on regular and optional tax, 4% ahead of last May. That's pretty much just keeping up with inflation. So. But on the bad side, on the bad news side, the auditor's office prepares a monthly report and looks at every month's on the recording revenues. And our recording revenues, I think I mentioned this before, but our recording revenues are significantly down. So for through July, they're down about a million dollars over last year.
Recording revenues are down about a million?
That's the document recording fees.
Yes, and there's various ones in this number.
So we weren't doing a million dollars a month, so.
No, cumulative so far through July compared to July last year cumulative.
A year-to-date for?
It's a million dollars difference. Most of the months are down anywhere from 30%. On average, it looks like it's 50% less than what we received last year.
Part of that is.
The good news is licensing revenues up and is, is holding its, holding its own. So it's not as much. I mean, we're only talking about, about 80, on average, 80,000 a month from that. But the recording fees prior to this year was on average in the 350 range.
Was that including the month of July?
Yes.
So I think part of that decline has to do with the city of Longview taking the money that had been pooled with us.
Right, part of it is.
This year, this year, they're pulling that out of it. You know, as the largest city, there's going to be a lot of recording fees that don't come to us.
Right.
Anymore because.
But I also, you're also seeing a decline in activity.
Right, yeah, both, both of those.
So out of the million dollars, that's the total difference from the county viewpoint?
Yes.
So if we take into the fact that some of that went out, that's a, that's a pretty good estimate. By the estimate, probably 150,000?
Yeah.
Okay, so. It's still a big hit.
Yeah, it's still a significant decline, even considering the fact that the Longview revenue is not coming in.
Didn't the Longview revenues come in at around 600,000?
I'll get you that actual number.
That's the number that I recall reading in the paper or something. Their, their share was.
It was half that.
Yeah, that sounds high. I don't think it's 600,000.
They were expecting about 75.
375.
Yeah, for the year.
The auditors got her hand up.
So I will, I'll go back and look at that actual number if you like, or Carolyn.
Go ahead.
Sorry about that. I had to rejoin. So the numbers that I provided, those are prior to Longview's deduction. So as just a really good example, we're down in July compared to July of last year. It's a 46% decrease, 336,000 to 231,000. So just wanted to clarify that this is just the money that we're collecting and then from that Longview gets to deduct their portion.
So we're just comparing apples to apples?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, yeah, so on the recording fees, but on the larger pool of money that we're earning, sales tax was still holding or holding pretty well. So I've, this past week, I've been working on reviewing budget submissions.
Before you go there?
Yes.
There, we were also getting income from the investment roof avenue. I assume that's still climbing a bit because. I assume that's still climbing a bit because we're averaging it over.
Yes, I, I can get you that information. It's, it's significantly over what we originally budgeted.
And just out of curiosity, what do you do with those earnings? Do those, those get allocated to the pools in proportion to the certificate holders, if you will?
Yes.
Okay.
The majority of it is in the general fund of the earnings. But they do go, they go to the actual fund, um, as the different special revenue funds, et cetera.
Right.
Okay, so, um, revise, I'm going to be revising the budget calendar just a little bit, just some tweaks. Um, I would like to get set up with a specific departments, their workshops in the month of September so that they can, can come before the board commissioners. And so they'll know their date and I'll know their date and be prepared. So most of the month of September will be workshops with it, with individual departments. And then the month of October are very specific workshops on things like personnel, motor pool, capital, things like that. So I'm trying to get everything lined up and make sure we have enough time for everything. Um, also this past week I worked on auditor schedules for twenty twenty-two, uh, related to budget entries and budget resolutions. And also a couple of other, um, request meetings requested that they had. In the area of risk, um, I had a very pretty busy week with risk duties as well. Completed a pollution, um, liability application. And this is one that we hadn't never done before on our tanks or underground tanks. So they asked for some specific information about that. Completed the review of appraisals, they sent us appraisals of all of our buildings that are over a million dollars. And so we looked at that. There's one building on the list that they, I think they had it at three million, something like that. But we're look, it's vacant and it's, uh, we're looking to sell that. It's like a modular building, I think at the landfill. And so we're looking to sell that and, um, and remove it. So we've asked them to, uh, reduce the valuation on that one. So that should help a little bit on our property insurance.
A, a question. In the private world, I understand you have choices of mark, to market and that kind of stuff. How does this impact us? So if, if our entire premises were, were assessed at a hundred dollars in value, what difference does it make if it goes up to two hundred or down to fifty?
Well, actually, our, um, part of our assessment from the risk pool on the property is based upon the valuation of our property. So they, they want those values to be maintained and, um, so that they can have adequate coverage for us. So they still, but the policy, the way the risk pool works, because I did ask, you know, what if we have one of these valuations wrong, completely wrong? And they said, no, it's replaced, as far as the risk pool, it's replacement value at the time of the loss. And these, but, but these valuations are helping them to maintain the assessment appropriately.
So how do we get those assessments?
They, they hired an appraiser, um, to actually do the appraisal on all of our buildings that were over a million dollars.
Like this building, for example?
They have an appraisal for this one for the Hall of Justice.
How do you appraise this building? I just, I mean, there's not a market for it.
Well, I think you, you mentioned it's replacement costs, not fair market value.
That's where I'm driving at.
Yeah. No, the, the actual appraisal, the good news is that our insurance, our, our risk is if we had a loss, it's replacement value. But for purposes of the assessment, it's based upon appraisal value. And the appraisal value is, um, a pretty generic as far as like, what would it cost to act? They do have the calculations of price per square foot of what they believe it would cost to replace the building. But it's, it's also realistic based upon the age of our building, et cetera, et cetera. So. Anyway, they, they do have an, um, an appraiser. I have, I don't have those skill sets, um.
You mean you don't have a Ouija?
Yeah.
Ouija board, yeah.
So I am curious, what big empty three million dollar building do you own? Where is that?
It's, it's a modular building. Um, I thought it's at the, I think it's at the landfill, but I had all of the buildings looked at by Mike. And, and asked him to look at everything to see if things looked reasonable. And that was one of the ones that stood out saying that they felt like that, that value was not reasonable.
Could that be the one at Tenaway landfill, the building over there?
What's the, what's the evaluation? You said three million? Did you pay three million for that?
Now, we're, we're, we're telling them we'd like to have it reduced, um, to about three hundred thousand because it is abandoned, it's vacant. And we're, we're looking to dispose of it. But Mike relayed back to me, we, I don't think we're going to dispose of it until like either the end of the year or the beginning of next year. So we still need to keep it on the books, but, but not at three million dollars.
So if we have a loss, they, they replace everything, replace this cost in the policy. What they charge is for premium is kind of like this, yeah.
It's based upon their best guess.
Yeah, in terms of disposing stuff, we know that the sheriff's office has had penciled in for a long time, uh, a building for, uh, when you're at a crime scene, you grab something, got to store it, uh, evidence. Thank you. And, uh, that, uh, we've made no progress, even though I don't doubt that we should do something there. Or that just in case repurposing can be done.
Yeah.
Um, we also, um, I prepared materials for this week's presentation to you on the risk pool. Um, so I did that. We had two areas of, that we had to catch up on some payments that, um, were behind. Uh, one was our workers' comp fund. We had a shortage in that, um, there's a bank account that's maintained to pay claims. And so we had one invoice, it was like twenty-three thousand dollars that had been overlooked and had not been paid. So they were unable to make a payment, a scheduled payment out of that workers' comp pool last week because of that. So we caught that up and, um, hopefully we're back on track. We also, um, had several expenses that the risk pools presented to us in, for July and August. And, uh, they're pretty significant, so we caught up on all of those payments as well this past week. So it was a big week for making payments on risk, uh, and on risk management. And let me see, that's it.
I'm trying to make a joke out of this, but that is, is really surprising how much you've done and gotten involved in. And, uh, you have a staffing problem, right?
Yes, yep, I'm, I am actually, um, delighted. I have several applicants for my budget analyst, and so I'm going to start reviewing those and hopefully get some interviews scheduled for a budget analyst position.
Okay, and, uh, then you might even need someone else too at some point.
Yes, yep.
Yeah.
So.
Good, thank you.
Yep, anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Corrections.
You brought reinforcements today.
Yeah, I did. I'll give a brief update on the population, I'm sorry, we're in Fox, Director of Corrections, and this is Captain Chris Moses. Our population today is two hundred and thirty-four, we had fifty bookings over the weekend. Uh, as we've discussed previously, uh, all of the local jurisdictions are now able to book on, uh, drug possession as a misdemeanor. In the fifty bookings over the weekend, ten of those included a drug possession charge. Uh, Longview started earlier as we previously, previously discussed, but now all the jurisdictions can book on those charges. I don't, and Longview will be the, the primary booker on, on possession, I, I would assume. We have an agenda item on tomorrow. Yep, go ahead.
A question on the drug possession there, uh, you probably don't know the circumstances necessarily, but I, I get the impression we get a lot of people that are, uh, heavy drug users. Are, are these heavy drug users you're seeing, or are these just twenty-two-year-olds who haven't figured out that they shouldn't be doing what they're doing?
I would say they're heavy drug users, that would be my assessment.
So it's a, it's a, it's a problem group of people, it's not just some arbitrary child or?
Correct, and most of those were combined with other charges, so they're not just being booked for possession, it's possession plus. So they were, uh, maybe contacted for something else, and then they have drugs on them as well.
So it's just not just the police grabbing someone off the street just peacefully minding his business.
That's correct. All right, we have an agenda item on tomorrow, uh, so I wanted to go over that. Just, it's for our, it's labeled M O U D, but it's the same thing as M A T, so medically assisted treatment. Which I'm sure you're familiar with. So, um, we started our M A T program, uh, funded through the mental health tax in, I think around twenty nineteen. And expanded it through this grant in March of twenty-two. And the, the numbers, when you look at it, are a little bit confusing. It shows, um, three different amounts, I don't know if you have it in front of you. It shows a maximum, prior maximum contract amount, an amount of an increase in a total maximum compensation. The, the, uh, number to focus on is that middle one, three fifty-seven, three seventy-seven oh four. That's the actual amount for July of twenty-three to June of twenty-four. That large number, the eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollar, um, amount is the total for the life of this, so that would be March of twenty-two to June of twenty-four. Is that correct, Chris? So with this approval, we'll be able to reduce the amount we're requesting for mental health tax, um, for M A T by about seventy-six thousand.
And again, you, you probably stick of answering the same question. M A T is something we do because we think it's good practice, it's not mandated by law.
It is mandated by R C W as well as case law.
Did that happen fairly recently?
Uh, yeah, yes, fairly recently, the R C W I can give you if you'd like to, if you'd like it.
No, that's okay, just, uh, yeah.
There was also some significant case law in Watkin County, um, that required us to start. That's, that's when we initially started, it was because of the case law in Watkin County with ACLU. It is now jails are required to do this now.
Okay, and, uh, there are always answer your questions like, uh, if I'm in jail and I, I'm on M A T and I get released, I'm no longer on M A T. Am I handed over to another agency?
Yes, and Chris might be able to explain that a little better than I can.
Yeah, so when they leave the facility, they're given at least seven days worth of medication to bridge that gap between when they, uh, are connected with a community provider. Uh, at release, our, our, uh, medical staff will reach out, make that appointment, get all that set up so that hopefully when they get out, they're going to this, uh, provider and, and continuing on with the program.
You know, the, the public is never a happy camper to pay for someone's drug use. And, uh, um, in, in, in this case, is there, to be on M A T, that's just kind of a humane way of trying to deal with people. But is, do they have obligations to cut back? Like if I go in as a heroin addict, are you trying to obligate me to, uh, to leave jail clean?
Could you say that again? I'm not sure I understood the question.
If I'm a, if I'm a drug addict, why don't I just get myself incarcerated so I can get my drugs for free? So I'm, I'm trying to ask, how do we protect ourselves against that?
This would be available to any of, uh, people that become inmates in the community. So if they were in the community, they would go to these providers and, and be on M A T while they're out. It's, it's available to them when they're out. The, the plus of starting it in jail is that we can kind of not force their hand, but they are a captive audience, so we may be getting people on treatment that otherwise in the community would not because they have drugs accessible. So the thought process is you, you get them clean off of drugs in jail and get them into this treatment program. So then when they get out, they're less likely to use illegal drugs because they're on a, a legal substance that reduces the cravings and reduces the, um, likelihood that they would use drugs. Opioids specifically.
Yeah, I, I guess I still don't know the answer to my question. Did you understand my question?
It's available to them, we force them to take it if they, if we, if they end up in our system.
We can't force them to, but they're more likely to because they, in jail, they're not able to access opioids in the community.
So their choices, they can, they can go through withdrawal by themselves or they can have, have some help.
Correct.
And it's available to them on the outside, they don't have to go to jail to get it. Just when we take them in, we say, these are your options, you can go through this alone or we can do this.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, the problem is the problem. If I am an addict and I'm having trouble finding something to keep me comfortable on an even keel, I'll get myself thrown in jail, I'll get taken care of for, for some amount of time, maybe short. And then I'm, I'm back out in there, there's never an obligation to wean myself off of the drugs.
Yeah, well, I think what Marin is saying is, is it's available out in the public. If they're having trouble getting their, their heroin or whatever drug choice, there is places in the public they could go to try and help them wean them off of that. They don't have to go to jail to access it.
I see what you're saying, I wonder.
So I know that, uh, the, the medically treatment programs get canceled, or used to get canceled once somebody came into custody. And then they were having all kinds of behavior problems, withdrawals and stuff. Has your staff noticed a change in behaviors since we've been on this plan that, um, the withdrawals and the, the?
Well, as we've discussed before, I think part of what has made it a little complicated is COVID and the change in drug laws. So all of these things ki- kind of happened at the same time, so it's pretty difficult to have a snapshot of, of before and after. Because the landscape changed almost entirely right as we were on the front end of starting this program. So I think it's going to take time.
Do, do you know enough about the medical plan as to how long they expect it to take to wean people off of the drugs?
Well, they're used two different ways while they're incarcerated. One is part of their detox to taper, um, it's the safest way to, to detox people off opioids. Uh, so these medications are used for that. And then, and then they're used, um, as the treatment program after that, if they choose to do that. So not everybody that is in jail chooses to do this, even if they qualify for it, but it is, uh, it's an option. And as far as their Medicaid, that piece has been worked out. They, our system, um, notifies Medicaid when they come in and notifies Medicaid when they go out. Um, and it's restarted immediately now instead of having that, I think there used to be like a thirty-day waiting period.
Rather than being canceled, it's suspended, so it's, the paperwork's still in order.
Yep.
And, and that's actually something that makes sense.
Yes.
To follow up on the change in behavior observation, um, it always depends on where you look. Like if you ask the public what the change of behavior out in the street is, it's not a pretty picture what they, what they have to say. The reason I bring it up and talking about it, first I accept that you have no choice, the R C W, so I'm, I'm not concerned over that. It's just, we don't get to talk too much without, in the public eye, and we've got some experts here. The, of the model is, and I think there was. Of the model is, and I think there was a sergeant out of. Out of Portland who uh who did this pretty well, I'm told, but again, I'm told.
Yeah.
So uh, if you go to jail and you've got a detox, it's not a pleasant thing at all. But once you've done that two or three times, you decide you're going to leave the area. And as far as I'm concerned, that's a viable solution to have people leave. And uh, this m- 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 model here is one where. Uh, you don't have to suffer the pain of it. And I'm I I'm actually conflicted because, as you know, I think. It's none of our business what somebody does with their with 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 the with the. Body. But at the same time, none of the taxpayers should be forced to pay for something they find important. So I'm.
Well, I have two comments. One. I don't know that who the sergeant is you're referring to, but we see people that will come and detox with us three times in a month. And then three times the next month. So that is not in my. Years of experience in corrections, true at all in this community that. That detox doesn't does not stop people from using there. That's not a lesson they're learning. Um, and additionally.
I I I didn't say it stops people from 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 using. I'm saying it causes them to leave town.
That that has not proven to be true.
Well, I don't think you can say that. I don't think I can say it. So it's just a thought.
Yeah, I I just we see people, the same people over and over and over, and they'll detox.
Right, but our system isn't a hard-nosed system, and that's what I'm saying.
Right. The the second part, though, is the the use of the medications for detox is not necessarily to make it more comfortable for them. But to keep them safe and to reduce liability to the county because you don't want to have a bad outcome. And and you can have bad outcomes and deaths um due to opioid detox. So it is. Harm reduction to the county. It's a risk reduction. It isn't the intent, our intent, my intent is not, let's make this as easy as possible. It's to reduce risk.
Have we had anybody in jail? Die of an overdose?
Yes.
Have we had anybody in jail die of an underdose?
Of what?
Underdose, in other words, detoxed?
Yes.
They died as a consequence of an opioid detoxing?
Yes.
How long ago?
Um, we had four four deaths between two thousand thirteen and two thousand and fourteen. And then one at the end of two thousand sixteen. All of those were related to uh opioid withdrawal.
Because they were, that they were, they were prevented from getting their fix. Is is that why they died? That's that's the thing I'm looking for.
Typically, and not specific to the ones I'm I'm speaking of, typically, the deaths are related to a dehydration. At on opioid withdrawal deaths. It's it's related to dehydration.
And we have had people die in jail from withdrawal.
Related to withdrawal, yes.
And you said four?
Yes. They've all been uh litigated and settled at this point, but yes.
I know four did have died of essentially overdose, but I was totally unaware that we had anybody die from an underdose, if you will.
During the detox process?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Hmm. And how many since we started the? M O U D program that we're talking about today?
Um, our last in custody death was, we had we had an overdose last summer. Um, and prior to that was two thousand sixteen. So we've had no deaths related to uh with opioid withdrawal since we started doing it this way.
Thank you.
Yeah, these conversations are always interesting to me. I'm I'm a little side, a little more on Commissioner Morton's side, a little more hard-nosed because. We spend a ton of money on people that don't want to do things right. And uh. Yet then we don't help. Some people that have tried to do right things all their life and and just need a hand. So it gets a little frustrating to me, but I understand. This is really, you're just talking about a grant you're getting from the state to help the program, and you're giving us some numbers what that's gonna. Going to be, and our decision is we want to accept the money from the state, or we don't want to accept the money from the state.
Right.
Yeah.
And the state money will, as I said, um, offset.
Right.
The the ask for mental health tax.
Yeah, so.
Our hope is that this will be able to shift more to the state in years going forward as well.
Yeah, let me just cap it off. Just to be sure, I look at us as a team, including department heads and and trying to solve these problems. And uh, that we have no choice in some things like M A T. I I mean, that that's beyond what we can discuss, but we can certainly. Try and put our heads together and say, does it really work? Does it really do the job? And is it worth the cost? And that's all I'm after.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Great.
Anything else?
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
You know, actually, thanks for the conversation on that today. It's always helped for me, other than tomorrow, it just shows up type thing. I T.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Hort, I T Director, and Mike Bamford, Deputy I T Director. We um appreciate your time uh last Wednesday to kind of shift our focus on uh retention and then also discuss the Microsoft. Enterprise renewal. We are looking at an annual cost increase. Based off of what we were paying three years ago. Um, the standard office user license has gone up thirty-two percent. And then um I forecasted about a seven percent growth in service accounts or additional users over the three years of the upcoming contract. Um, that's our as-is renewal. We are also requesting to add in a compliance and retention modules. Um, this would assist with categorizing data along with records management, so email archiving. The licensing cost per user is two hundred and twenty-six dollars. So that is why there is. Um, such a large increase in addition to that thirty-two percent licensing. Do you guys have questions about the modules or?
So the the revenue is generated on an assessment from each department based on the number of computers that have these licenses?
It is based off of users and then also service accounts. So if there's like an application that requires an email account that consumes a license.
Okay.
So.
Still wants.
The last contract we signed with Microsoft was two ninety-four user and and today we're looking at, is it another three-year? It's another three-year contract, right?
Yes, this would lock in the rates.
And Microsoft is saying it's three eighty-seven now versus two ninety-four. And those costs, as Commissioner Weber uh alluded to, kind of go out to the users.
Mm-hmm.
In their departments, they have to budget for that type of stuff. I'm.
Correct.
And that's.
Then it comes back to us.
Yeah, then it comes back to us. In the addition stuff. So. These top two things are really just a renewal of everything we are currently doing.
Um.
Is that fair?
Primarily, the user licensing is the bare minimum. Um, the top section. Includes that uh request for additional modules. So that would be the total picture sticker price.
Okay, so the top you've included this additional, so we could see that, okay?
Correct.
So uh E A is enterprise.
Enterprise agreement.
Agreement, okay. And uh, just to recover what. What the commissioners just. Covered the. The annual cost. What was the annual cost the last time, last contract?
Annual cost was two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Two forty K, and that got us. The licensing for everybody in the county?
Plus service accounts, yes.
Okay, and then uh what you're looking at here is. An increase that's. Little more than a factor of two, right? And then if I go to user licensing, uh, I don't understand it. I don't understa- How do we get to five hundred and forty-four thousand from two hundred and forty thousand?
So um the licensing per user um was the two ninety-four with a thirty-two percent increase.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's the two ninety-four is a preview cost, and then we add the. The thirty-two percent. And and we're doing apples to apples there.
Yep.
If we didn't want to do anything else, it would be two ninety. A third. A third essentially, uh, third to eighty. Be careful of doing a arithmetic. Call it a hundred, so I'm up to about three ninety-four. So three eighty-seven is the number you're saying has a thirty-two percent. You know?
And and then it's the an additional two twenty-six on top of that for the.
No, the two twenty-six would be in addition to that, the three hundred and eighty-seven.
That's in addition to the three eighty-seven, yeah. Yeah, so. But we haven't had the compliance or retention modules to help.
We have not, no.
Which is why we're saving everything that doesn't need to be saved, so.
But but it, yeah, and also in the third, you you've. You you're factoring in and and this could or could or may may or may not happen. You're factoring in growth in users.
Correct, or service accounts.
So so you're. There's a little bit in there that may or may not happen. It depends on how the county grows. Am I reading that? That's what I'm understanding, okay?
So the five hundred and forty-four thousand. Does not include anything in the compliance and retention modules?
It does.
It does.
That's the the full request.
Okay, I I thought we were talking about this before. We need a plan before we can do that.
So the plan is looking at decommissioning the Barracuda plants for email archiving. Um, the strategy that we've worked on with the retention committee is um the system's not user-friendly when it comes to managing.
Okay, those words don't mean anything to me, not user-friendly. I I, you know, I cannot quantify that.
Okay. So we have licensing locked in with Barracuda for um all the way through twenty twenty-seven. And currently, that pricing, if you want a graph, um, is eighty-five dollars. And then once that contract terminates in twenty twenty-seven, it's going to go to two hundred and twenty-five dollars. So the intent is to. Kind of overlap the systems to where we can configure the Microsoft compliance module, so then we could be ready to turn off the Barracuda email gateway. In twenty twenty-seven.
So to get to this bottom one, it it's it's a process?
Yes.
I mean, it's not a light switch.
No, there would be configuration to where we can categorize data.
So does it? Does it ever make make sense uh on our level to set a placeholder? We want to get here, and if. We agree, if we can get to an agreement on the process, then then we flip that switch in this. Then this comes in? Does that ever make sense? I mean, I've done some of that in the past, set placeholders if certain things happen. So it's already in the budget?
I it it it. I wouldn't do it necessarily that way. It's not a bad thing to earmark something, but the problem when you earmark something, it will get spent. It'll get spent before the proper uh discussions have occurred, before the proper plan is out there. Uh, that's how we get ourselves into the condition that we basically are in and trying to uh. Trying to suggest that the answer is a tool. Is the wrong thing. The answer is not the tool until you know what it is you're that. That you're doing with the beta, right, and uh.
Al- although um what Rick Rick described is exactly what we did when we switched over the tax and um. We did that whole huge shift over. We saved money over several years and then. Then we're.
And we did what?
To adopt. When we we shifted over the, what was it, the ticks tips or? Humility, remember? I can't remember the.
Hims to packs.
Right, because I think it was like over about a three-year period of time that we. Put the finances aside, and they didn't get spent until it was time to to uh hold, to turn on the switch. So I think that strategy can work, but. We had agreed ahead of time that that was the that was the direction to go and and uh. And staff gets that direction from the commissioners. They they know. You know what their limits and guidelines are, so.
Understood.
So the plan had, you know, so the understanding is we can we can budget this. It'll take a while to get the equipment anyway. To and and then the equipment can start doing the processing of. Uh, according to the retention schedule and all that, the decommissioning stuff.
And again, it was a request for your input. So if it's something that we're not ready to move forward on, um, we can definitely scale back um the request. So um that would, without tax, drop us down to three hundred and fourteen thousand. Per year.
I. And if we go to three hundred and fourteen thousand, that's uh. Seventy, eighty thousand dollar increase, and that's just the. Escalation clause that Microsoft has in there. Um, can, so in the three-year, in the in the three-year contract from the prior three years. Uh, what was the escalation clause in there in terms of how many percent did it? Go up each year?
We were locked in for three years, so there was no.
Oh, so we were locked in at a fixed price.
We would be doing today is locking in the pricing for three more years.
This would lock us in for another three years.
Correct.
Yeah. At that price.
The the only escalation she ha- she has in there is if.
We buy more computers.
Well, well, yeah, if we if we. Need more licenses, and she's kind of building in a seven percent just as an estimate.
Right, right, I.
And we may or may not even do that, yeah.
The the, yeah, that that part I'm clear that.
Okay.
Thirty-two percent, I was trying to relate that to. Uh, cost of business kind of thing. So in three years, you'd expect uh. Depends on how they did the previous contract. Remember, doing percentages is always entertaining.
Yeah.
Um, but that's a hefty increase.
It is.
With what is essentially monopoly. We tried something different, and it's not working for us.
Right, we have to have.
Yeah.
Our enterprise licensing and.
Then then there are other issues like uh, have you? Have any of you ever gone to this uh store and tried to buy yourself a new operating system? I mean, you've got various options. And you would buy that based on uh. Uh, on your needs. The needs of our users here are pretty widespread, but a majority of us are are. Not tied to 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 too much. So do we have any possibility of saying? Out of, I don't know, six hundred licenses, two hundred are hot shots, and the rest of us?
We look at it, um, there is a frontline license, which we've used for like the committee, like the board of health. Rather than giving them a full enterprise license where it's installed on their computer, a client-based. Um, it's all web-based. So we are scaling and accounting for user. Usage.
How 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 much is that helping us?
Um, it's a significant, I don't know the number off the top of my head, um, but the license, per licensing, um. It's not three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. It's quite a bit less.
So uh uh what are we really trying to do here? Are we trying to say we want to buy this stuff, or are we trying to say that we're going to set a budget aside? Because they're they're not the same thing. If you're saying that we need to have half a million dollars aside because we've got some problems to fix, I can probably be swayed. If you're saying that we need to have half a million dollars aside because we've got some problems to fix, I can probably be swayed. If you're saying we gotta buy this stuff, I'm saying I'm not a happy camper at all. Well, the way I look at it is two different things. We got a license renewal of something that we we use right, right now for our people to access what they need to access. The addition is if we wanna add a retention thing, so that's a, that's a different animal. Correct. To me. So the first part, I'm saying, I don't if we're talking renewal, I don't control how much Microsoft's gonna charge us. I don't like that it increases, but I think people, our people still need to access. I think we need some retention changes in in the future, but I'm not, I'm not saying it's, it's, it's right now. We just have to, once we get to where we're comfortable with what that could do, we have to be willing to spend so some money at that time. Okay, so the purpose of this is just to have a public discussion.
And then also prepare for our enterprise agreement renewal that
Wh- when does Microsoft renew that? When is that?
The end of this month.
The end of this month? And the uh thirty-two percent increase, that's apples to apples. You're, you're not adding any features, you're not adding anything to that.
Correct. And then um I have it in my notes, the enterprise frontline license, again, which is just cloud applications is eighty-four dollars per user versus
Again, please.
What?
I I did not hear adequately what you said.
The frontline license cost per user is eighty-four dollars.
That's, that's the bare minimum that you you talked about.
That's for the
The scaled back version.
So, so some of our people get that and some get the other and and is that all built into this three? Whatever? You've kinda, you've kinda taken the whole cost and just divided it by users and says, so we have so many at this price and we have so many at that price. But
So
Personally, I'm okay with renewing our service. I, I'm, I'm thinking we have more work to do on this retention piece. Right, we, we, we have no choice uh but to renew the licensing. Yeah. That I agree. That it's apples to apples, I, I it really needs to be apples to apples and thirty-two percent, at this point, I'm unfamiliar whether that is reasonable, reasonable or not. Not that we can do anything about, about that, but prices aren't determined arbitrarily. The vendors has some algorithm, and I don't know what that algorithm is. Yeah. Thirty-two percent uh um, ten percent a year increase? I don't know. Yeah. We're somewhat, somewhat a captive audience. Yeah, I I agree with you, Aaron. So I think what I'm correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what I'm hearing up here is we're okay with that, just apples to apples renewal.
Okay.
We'll, we'll do some work on the other. We're not gonna throw that out, but we wanna see how that's gonna work before we make a decision on that. Am I, am I, are we good with that? Yeah. Okay.
When it comes to budget time, although we're ready to set some aside, we've gotta do something. We need to be building it up.
Oh, absolutely. The sad story is IT has been troublesome since I first got here and uh it cost us to get to get ourselves out of the hole. I, there, there are some things where I'm still scratching my head on and some I even voted on in good faith like the phone system, but that those things are, you know, it I think it's really important, I've said it a thousand times. Let's have a plan that we can all sit and look at and say, yes. And I've been asking about that for a little over a year. Well, you know, s- sometimes in that that starts with us, where we decide um, we have to give direction and say, we want the county to be able to do this. I and I, and I haven't been here long enough to know, may, maybe we've done that. I mean, the county should recover in forty-eight hours. I'm just throwing numbers out there, or the county should do this. These are the parameters we think the county should have. Now you develop a plan that makes those parameters happen and I don't and maybe we've done that. I haven't been here long enough to to tell you if we have or we haven't. But it, really, both sides have have some work to do on, on that. Yeah, uh. Are we clear as mud?
Pretty clear as mud.
License renewal, we're good, we'll work on the other. Okay?
Thank you.
We're, we're running. I'm gonna, can I touch a little bit of miscellaneous? I know we're running a little bit late, but on the the awards, how have you guys, how have we handled it in flat past? Is something we sit down and talk about or we like give Kelly your top two and see if there's a common or or what do we do? I You've been in the longest.
We've just developed the, the consensus, kinda like how you described, letting the clerk know the, the top choices that we
So, so see if each of us gave the clerk our top choices, if there is a common one, then we could work on, I don't, I just don't wanna let that sit. Oh, I, I agree. In fact, I, I actually thought this one is complicated enough that I, I wanted to I wanted to talk about that in an executive session to, so we don't uh, you know, it's performance of
Is all about
The performance of an employee. And then the other one in in principle is just there are lots of things to uh figure out. It's, it's, it's almost in it really is impossible for us to elect an employee of the year out of five hundred and some odd employees. I know it. And so we're gonna have to figure out some strange arguments. Okay. And those often are gonna be So, so why don't we commit to taking a look at it, that and tomorrow afternoon we'll hold an executive session and talk it over. Uh, yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
No, we have.
We're all up.
We have.
We, yeah, we've got all of that. How much time, Jessica? Okay? And performance? So fifteen minutes total on performance of a public employee and ten minutes on collective bargaining? Okay. Let's do it.
I have been. How do you know? Everyone knows. FX is like. They uh. Uh, we do. And so you. So yeah. Yep. Patient. I hope. Like. My agent here. I'm just. Hello. Uh, but she. And I'm like, are you kidding? You're gonna be a viable. Or like. Why would I say?
Yeah.
I think that. Cover me the.
Yeah.
Will you take one? Yeah. Yeah. Um. Did you? Well, you don't. No, you did not. My first one. It's fifty five.
Uh, there's. Yeah. Sorry. Yeah. They they can start. Yeah. Start now. They got they got.
They don't. Almost. Uh. Something. I can only. For. Yes. Yes. Open here. Yeah. They. Oh, your. Perfect. Yes. Good night. What? And the day. There's the same day. Little. I was like. And but it was like that. It was hard. But I'm. Yeah. 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 Next. So my. Picture. Off. Yeah. The reality. Yeah, so I'm having. So you said. One day. That I was looking on Saturday. And I just got a patient. Yes. I'm like. Okay. Like. This is. Okay. That's.
What?
In. Drive.
Mm hmm.
Out. Turn. Oh.
And um.
Oh.
Indeed. Right. So. I think. We. And. We.
Hello. And. Yeah. I feel like. Very. It turns the life. Very good. The. What? It's.
Is your. Talk.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, I. I. Yeah.
It.
Do you?
It.
If you. That.
If I. That.
Oh.
Step up. Step up.
Yes.
Fantastic. If you. Also. Sir. From. Hmm. That question. It's. So. So. I'm. Well. Yeah. Bro. Yep. Then. Like. That. This is. Got it. You like. Ten. Yeah. Six. It. I think. I so. It was actually funny. The role. In. A hundred and forty weeks. The first time. I can put that all. Well. Eight days.
Okay.
All of them. Yeah. Yeah. All of them. So we never. Ever been right about. So this year. I think. Yeah. It. Was. Yeah. What's on it? Yeah. You don't. That. It's. Um.
Here.
As. X. What? Oh. Yes. It's. It's. At the heart. And. And. Something. Actually. It has. And. One. The. Last. But. Probably. And then. But they. Who. Stay. They just. Stay. Right. So. Please. When you. So. That. Show. You know. They. Be. Very. Upset. It. Up. One. I do. But. Your. I have. Stop. Thank you.
The board is extending executive session for a period of five minutes until eleven thirty nine AM.
Hi. Yeah. I would say. You're. Then. You're. Can. Hey. Okay. It's. Uh. Thank you. Okay. Is it? That. When you. Okay.
Yeah.
See. Okay. That's. That's. You. Good.
Okay, we're back from executive session. No decisions were made?
Jessica Warren, Human Resources. I would like to request to fill the risk manager position.
So move.
We need motion. We're good. Okay. We have a motion. All is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Thank you. Any other? Mr. Lanius, I see no hands.
Mr. Chairman, I have an appointment, but I'm trying to get it pushed back a little bit.
Okay, so we will adjourn the ten o'clock meeting and we'll start up right away with the other. Okay. We'll start with our eleven o'clock meeting, Public Works. No, yeah.
Yeah, that's nice. Good morning, Commissioner Savannah Clement with Public Services. This morning, we didn't have any building and planning items to discuss unless you guys do. And if not, we can go straight to facilities, maintenance and purchasing.
We didn't have any building and planning?
We didn't have any updates from the department for this week, but if you guys had any items.
Well, I have some items.
Okay.
I have all kinds of questions on the planning commission meeting.
Do you want us to do?
If you want to do whatever your stuff is and then.
Okay, perfect. All right, she's just gonna go grab a couple of the planners. People might assist and then we'll go ahead and start with facilities maintenance. Will, do you want to go ahead and talk about the chiller completion?
Yeah. Good morning, Commissioners. Will Tosshead, Facility Service Manager. On tomorrow's consent agenda is a chiller completion letter. The project was fully completed back in May. All the invoices were finally collected and we're closing out that project.
At the Hall of Justice?
Yeah, yeah, at the Hall of Justice. Yep. Do you have a copy of the agenda? Savannah's gonna bring you copies. Any questions on that project?
I don't see any.
How did the temperatures at the Hall of Justice fare during the super hot weather?
Yeah, some offices were still a little bit warm. It kind of seems it's the corner offices of that building. I don't know if it's airflow to those corners, but we really struggle in the corner offices and some areas were great. Walking through, you know, we even got, you know, some comments, wow, it's kind of chilly in here, you know, kind of like today in this office, but. It did what it was meant to do. I think that building's always going to continue to be a struggle. You know, with the systems over the years, but the chiller's doing what it's supposed to.
And the fact that huge plate glass windows.
Yes.
Are difficult to regulate.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah. Looks fancy or did in the seventies when it was designed, but it's now not such a state of the art.
Yep.
Model. Not enough reason to implode the building, however.
Not yet.
No.
All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to the other item, which is the facility's five-year tentative plan. Our original plan was to present this during budget hearing times. However, I believe the board will have a presentation regarding ARPA funding attached to some of our HVAC proposals. So we wanted to go ahead and get this in front of the board before Wednesday's afternoon session. So you have seen this previously back when we brought it last year. And this is our revised list moving forward for the 2024 budget year and on. A lot of the items will have remained the same with the exception of items that we've completed. And I believe that the one thirty meeting on Wednesday, Carolyn and others will be bringing forward an ARPA request. And I don't want to get too down in the weeds just because I wasn't at their last meeting. But mainly focusing on HVAC funding with ARPA dollars remaining. And so if you, the ones I had in mind were item number thirteen, Hall of Justice HVAC, that we have earmarked for nine hundred and ninety thousand for next year. And then seven hundred and ninety thousand the preceding year twenty twenty five. So this is really just for your review and we'll continue to go more in depth with this at the budget hearing meetings. So you just kind of have a heads up on this item. Okay, so I can move on to the next.
Well, I appreciate the heads up. Yeah, I have to look this over.
So with that, and just wanted to give the board an update on our steering committee progress. We'll be meeting actually this afternoon and then we have a second.
What that means. The word steering committee is used so often for so many different things.
So Facilities Space Needs Steering Committee. And this committee, I talked about it a little bit last week. This is to determine some facility spatial needs for the county. We're focusing on the Hall.
The other capital improvement committee.
This is not the capital.
All the campuses are represented.
Correct. This is not that. This is a volunteer-based committee to determine facility needs countywide. We're focusing on the Hall of Justice as our primary facility. I would call it not a study necessarily, but as a group, we're coming together to determine our needs there. What we'll do with the existing building, what we could do in the future for a new law center building locations. We're addressing spatial needs currently. So we're meeting today to go over some of our findings. Our team had some homework that we have done that we wanted to present to the group. And to do so, to try to accommodate the court schedules, we're doing that in two meetings. And the first of the two meetings is today and the second meeting will be August thirty first. I can go on if you guys want more information. As far as having everybody represented, this was a voluntary committee. Whereas CIP, we actually have, you know, delegates, but representatives from each location, as you mentioned, the steering committee is comprised of people who have volunteered to get involved to kind of move this forward.
Yeah, so their recommendations will go to the CIP before they come to us, right?
I envision as actually coming to the board first to make sure that we're on the right plan before even going to the CIP committee.
Yeah, and I sit on that committee and part of my job is make sure you guys know what we're looking at so I can get your input as we move along.
You sit on which one?
The Facilities Needs Committee.
That's gonna be in the GMR?
Yes, sir.
That.
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock today.
Commissioner Weber, did you have any other questions on that? You look like you're mulling it over, so.
Oh, it just sounds like it's an end run around the capital improvement committee, so, but that'll work out later, I guess.
Okay.
You know, we know they will want to tear the whole thing down. They've been saying that for years, so. I mean, we kind of know where they're headed.
Yeah, and we're, honestly, we're trying to explore all options, not just, I think you're right, you know, that's a popular opinion. So what we've done is we're working with some modeling on what we absolutely would have to do, even in five years, ten years. Because we know even if we're tearing the building down, we're not, we're gonna still be there, right, for at least, I would say, three to five years, even if we made that plan today. I think with funding and.
And got it approved.
And got it approved, exactly. I mean, so we understand that. So we're trying to do a couple of different things, is, you know, assess the situation. What do we need now, today? What will we need to continue to go through the next three to five years and then also moving forward? So there are several layers that I think the CIP committee, there's such a high level when it comes to the funding and approval. This was kind of more just a steering committee group and brainstorming.
So I don't then understand why we would budget a million six dollars in additional improvements to Hall of Justice if it's gonna be torn down.
I don't know that it'll be torn down. And that's what I'm saying, the budgetary items that we have will be for our needs currently for the next three to five years. So even if we decided again today to tear down the building and the board said, go for it, we got it voted approved in a perfect situation, we would still need heating and cooling there. And we would still need electrical upgrades. So those are the things that we're finding throughout this committee, what we would need just now, just from all the deferred maintenance.
I'll be interested in hearing the recommendations.
You know, I don't think tearing down your ride is a popular thing, but people do all kinds of things with buildings. I was back in Minneapolis over the weekend and the old Pillsbury, you know, building has been there forever and they're repurposing that finally into condos and stuff and bringing it up. And it's just this big old brick building. So always the first thought and the easy thought is, well, let's bulldoze this thing, but I think you can look at other options. It's amazing what some people turn things into.
So we're gonna go ahead and have building and planning come up. Tracy or Wayne or Mike? I'm not sure. Unfortunately, I did not make the B-PAC meeting on Thursday. I was not here, so I won't be much help.
Hi Commissioners, Tracy Jackson, Building and Planning. You had questions of planning commission? I went and got Wayne Nelson, our planning manager, in case he was in attendance, but do you have other questions, too?
Yeah, I did. I sit on Friday and I, or last Wednesday. And I struggle, I've sit in for, I think, four months now and it, I struggle with some of the stuff that's there. It seems. It's a very inefficient process and I, so I'll just take them piece by piece here. First thing they ask about is you're doing stuff with boundary lines. And Wayne mentioned that we had talked to the commissioners about it. It must have been a day when I was out, so I don't remember it and so. Yeah, I either don't remember it or I wasn't here. So my question on it is, I always, when I look at this stuff and I see the whole boundary line talk is about making it more, you have to have permits or you have to come in and do it more formally. And then there's a fee to it, then I always want to know what prompted it. What prompted that says that now we need to do this? I mean, do we have a hundred of them sitting on there? We're trying to mitigate or what was the key that said that we gotta do this?
Well, the boundary line adjustments, we currently have a fee for, we have a process for. Anybody can record it. They don't have to go through our office. And that is becoming a huge issue.
Huge. Define it for me. How many people over the last two years have we had to mitigate this stuff with?
I don't know about in the last few years, but overall, so what happens is larger pieces of property, huge, huge, like acreage. They get sagged down into the ten acre parcels. They sell those off, then that, excuse me, that buyer divides those up, either large lots or short flats. And then usually in between all of that, someone comes in and boundary line adjusts. One, two, or all of the lots. And it's becoming quite an issue with new building permits that are coming in because we don't have, they don't have the correct access. They don't have their, because their boundary line adjustment helped with their piece of property. But now someone's well or septic or building permit on the other side of the lot or that's not affecting them. They're encroaching on somebody's drain field, their shop, their whatever, and they can't fix, change, do anything and it kind of, it almost landlocks them to where they can't do anything.
Once again, give me numbers. How many, how many, how many times does that happen that we gotta make everybody go through this?
We weren't asking to change the fee. We were looking to keep the same type of fee, just make it a more standardized process to basically protect the new buyers. A lot of times, I know Savannah.
It's not our job to protect people. It's our job to ensure they have freedoms to do what they want to do.
Correct.
When I was at the treasurer's office, we would only, we would process boundary lines more considerably in the fourth quarter of the year because they require property taxes to be paid in full. So I would say just from my memory of doing, processing them down there, maybe eight to ten in that fourth quarter. We didn't track them throughout the year. I think what the huge.
How many of eight to ten caused a problem?
So in the treasurer's office, I can't speak for that, but what I can speak for is the process and how they got there, which there was none. And I think that everything is defined. And when I say everything, I mean the large lot, the short plat, the subdivisions. Those all have some kind of regulation attached and then you kind of throw in this boundary line adjustment with nothing, with no kind of approval, no oversight. The only thing that's required is that taxes are paid in full and they record the document.
What I'm trying to get at is what is the problem with it?
So the problem.
Who's abusing it and is it pervasive?
I don't think that the abuse is intentional. I don't think people intend to like skirt any kind of rule. It's the fact that there is no rule on the boundary line adjustments. If that makes sense. And so if I wanted a boundary line mine, I would just come in, bring a map, I'd pay my taxes and record it. And then I sell my land, which is fine, but then I sell my land and what they're alluding to is Tracy buys my land and this kind of weird boundary line was done and it has no assurances that that it's not landlocked and that I have access per, you know, road. So I think that's what she's saying when she's saying that the abuse of it isn't so much intentional.
I don't think it's intentional.
How many times does that happen?
It's come up.
I don't, I'm not a fan of imposing more restrictions on people if there's not a big problem out there. And so I always, I want to know what prompted this. Is it just somebody had a bright idea?
No.
Or it just?
It's people are, we're having customers come in for building permits and they don't have maybe a legal lot to access their piece of property, but they don't know that. Or because their neighbor went and boundary line adjusts something or they can't, they can't fix their drain field because, or they can't, they're having problems with their well and they can't. It's stuff that's happening on your neighbor's piece of property or the property that I bought because it was for sale. I bought it. It was a good piece of property. And I found out I really don't, I can't put the home that I wanted to on it because the lot size isn't correct. It's down below the minimum lot size.
Isn't that some, someone on the buyer that they didn't do a title and didn't search out? Or make sure they were capable of doing that?
Boundary line adjustments don't always hit the title. They're just a recorded piece of.
They're just a recorded.
They're just a recorded document. They don't hit the title. A title search wouldn't usually find a BLA. They could, but it might not. It's not a subdivision. It's just, you know. We find a lot of these with larger pieces of property that divide it down and then divide it down again or move. We, we find a lot of these with larger pieces of property that divide it down and then divide it down again or move. And then I think one of them's up off of, um, Mustang Drive, if I'm right. They've, they've had large pieces of property, Rose Valley to Young to Mustang, is that right?
Yes.
Um, they went and they had these huge, large pieces of property, they divided it down to, um, you know, the short plat, large lot. And now, and since then, they've divided all these land and, or these lines, and now we've got permits that are coming in the door and someone doesn't have access. We have one of those currently.
No, by, by no access, you mean they don't have frontage on a county road?
Don't have frontage, correct.
Okay, so, so fire protection can't get to them?
Correct.
I see it as a, um, I, I guess I could go either way, cuz I definitely understand what you're saying, Commissioner Dahl, on as far as restricting people's opportunity to change their land or make changes and, uh, record those changes. Uh, I just personally, this is anecdotal, um, helping individuals who are, who are trying to do these boundary line adjustments. But we have as a county, no like way or streamlined process to help them do this because there is no check. So when they came, would come in, they're like, well, what do I do? And at the Treasurer's Office, I mean, we, we're collecting tax payments, you know? We're like, well, sorry, we're not much help. Well, we went to Building and Planning and they don't have a process to, to, to review this and approve this. And we went to the Auditor's Office and they'll record any documents, so we had people constantly just going in circles. And then if you throw in designated forests with the Assessor's Office, I mean, it was, it's quite the process and there's no internal process at the county to say, oh, you need to go here and they'll just check it off for you or, and then you'll be fine. You know, there was no like assurance for these people. They were, in my opinion, again anecdotal, helping them, they were lost because of that. Unless they wanted to hire someone to do the entire process for them, we didn't offer internally anything for them as a resource because we don't have anything in place to do it.
And we're just looking for something, uh, of the process to help, to help the basically innocent buyer. So they don't get screwed out of being able to put on what they want on their homes.
Well, right.
We do have a, we do have a fee in place, it's like, it's a minimum, um, it's administrative determination, basically, type fee. Like a hundred and eighty dollars-ish, I think that's what it is. Um, we currently have it, we're not looking to change that, we're not, we're just looking to try to get the process a little more formalized to really protect that innocent buyer.
Yeah.
Cause it's.
And typically, they become more formal year after year after year after year, and that's what I fight against. If you wanna put in new restrictions, then I would say, show me five, you're taken off, and let's start making this better for people. I'll move on to another one. This, the floodplain thing. That initially, you actually initially brought that to us and you asked for, um, our recommendation. Because after the mountain blew, the county set a three foot above floodplain requirement, which is higher than FEMA requires. And your question to us was, do we wanna keep it at the three or do we wanna go with what FEMA requires at, at one foot? And, uh, the recommendation from this board was, let's go with the FEMA requirements. If, if somebody building a house wants to do more than that, that, that's up to them. So I, I said in the meeting when you took that to the Planning Commission, and, uh, they decided, no, we gotta protect the consumer. We want it three feet. It surprised me that staff didn't say, well, the Commissioners were, were thinking about the one foot. So now this thing, what started with us, and then a month or so, or how many days it was till it goes to them. They decided, no, we want it this way, and this month, you're having some research done on it, so it won't get talked about till next month. And then it won't come to us till probably after that. So we got something that started over here that could have been decided right then, it's gonna be five to six months down the road. How more inefficient can we get? This drives me crazy. This. Why do we do this? Why, i- if you're gonna, we're the ones that make the decision on anyway, so I don't know why it just didn't come here and, and get it done. Instead of, we gotta spend six months over a simple decision. Uh, satisfying nine people sitting on a board that has to come with us anyway. So I'm really curious, this, I just find that, I, I just wanna go. This is crazy, we're gonna take six months on a decision that we've already told you what we want. I guess I'm just kinda, I'm not asking for an answer, I, I suppose, I'm just venting some frustration that this system is, is totally inefficient. I, I, I just don't even get it. I'm not sure how we got to that point. I looked up to see uh, Planning Commission was in nineteen fifty-nine, they put these together. And when you read through it, it's basically, to me, it sounds like to kinda decide what portions of your, your county should be, high density, all that, that kinda stuff, and I get that. But now we got them talking about whether you're one foot or three foot above a floodplain or you're, or you're, you're this, or all this other nonsense, and it, uh, it says that we official controls, do we have a copy of county adopted official controls that we ask them to do? Cuz the county, from time to time, we may request them to do certain things. So I'm trying to find, if you have a copy of the things that we've requested this commission to do, I'd like to, I'd like to get a copy of that. Because I think it's, there's a lot of things that are totally inefficient that, that could come to us direct, get it decided and, and on we go.
We can, we can get those in how the board, our board wants them to look. We utilize the hearing examiner a lot too, so we don't use the Planning Commission for that, we use, um, the hearing examiner too.
And, and this is probably a question more for my boardmates. In this, it said you can have a, a planning commission of five, seven or, or nine Commissioners. We have nine, how do, how do we get to nine? And we have people on there that sit there, it's almost like a lifetime appointment, they've been there forever.
They have.
There's no turnover on this thing, and, um, I think. Well, I'm at the point where I'm, I'm working, I'll come back with some suggestions because I just think it's totally ineff, in, inefficient, and, and I'm just giving my colleagues a heads up that, that I'll be offering some suggestions down the line. Cuz I don't see any turnover on that board. Uh, there's nine of them, which I totally don't get why we, we need nine. Especially if the main duties are to, to keep us up to date on how we should be planning in our county. I think we've, we've given away a lot of duties, um, that really, I'm not a I don't like that you, we give, uh, unelected committees, departments, whatever, the ability to affect the public when they don't have a throat to choke, they can't unelect them. They can unelect us, we're the throat to choke. So the other ones, whether we like it or not, we're the ones that put on our big boy pants and make the decisions, and that's the way it should be. Shoving some of that stuff on, on to unelected positions, I'm not a fan of, and so I wanna, once again, I'd like to see that list of things we ask them to do and see if we can't pare that down. Then the last thing is we have an advisory council.
Mr. Chairman, if I can make a comment on that last one. I I appreciate wh- what you're doing and saying, and I, I'm, I'm okay with that. I do wanna comment on the count of nine, there, there's one thing that I definitely want out of the Planning Commission, and that's not so much check the box out. Because these folks can do the check the box out, have they done everything? What I need out of the commission is a sense of where the public wants to go with. You know, it's always a contest between prob, property rights of the developer and property rights of those neighbors. And, uh, I really crave input from the public on that. So I, in my head, I think three from each of the districts adds up to nine in all. And I, I don't expect a uniform, I mean, it just puzzles me when we get a, everything is a unanimous agreement on it, which is, should be alarming to anybody. Uh, and so I, I'm not sure what fight I picked, but you got me.
Yeah, it. You can, you can do it in different ways, with five, you can actually have, uh, department head from the county sit on that. With seven, you can have two from the county and have a mix, and, and, you know, with, with the nine, they don't usually disagree. I've sit in there and, and listened to them, I, I, I could, well, I won't go into the other story. I'll save that, but. So I, I looked up and I said, okay, we have a B-PAC, and I tend B-PACs when I'm, I hear, and I think it's valuable. And then we have a planning commission, and I said, why do we have both? Well, B-PAC was, uh, formed by resolution in two thousand and seven. And it basically is responsibilities for the advisory council will include review of department's work plan, stakeholder and customer input practices, service levels, process performance, implementation of new technology and, and developing new regulatory guidelines and extent, and standards. And this B-PAC is set up to any of these changes are to be presented to us. So I, I, we set up a, a B-PAC that's supposed to look at a lot of this stuff, and if they recommend changes, it comes through the Board of Commissioners. And then we have a planning commission that, that looks at stuff, and I'm not really sure I understand the difference other than the whole county, uh, where think, where high density should be and all that, county planning. So were any of you around in two thousand and seven to understand why we thought we, and I, I actually think this, these people are probably more valuable. If you want my honest opinion.
I was, I wasn't in the department, but I was around in two thousand and seven, um. B-PAC was set up for a holistic approach, for an overall kind of a, um, bring in industry professionals um, to hear what was going on in the streets and to make our department, um, work jointly with the industry professionals. Um, as well as look at policies and anything that was affecting what we do, what's gonna affect them and get that, um, cohesive approach, um, to make the Commissioners aware, that's why we have a Commissioner on the, um, as part of the B-PAC, um, just cuz you're the voice of the board. Um, and then my position, and then we bring staff on just, um, as part of that, uh, depart, or that committee. Um, that committee is very, I, in my mind, very effective, um. Right now, we have good momentum with that, um, committee, they're very active. Um, they're more of our active customers too at the counter, to where they, they really are out there, the, the boots on the ground. They, they see it and they, they are living it, and so, you know, we work with them to try to make it better for, you know, what they're doing out in the field. Uh, Planning Commission is for quasi judicial and legislative matters. It's, it's for the land use applications that come in, that need to have that, um, shooting off the hip here, but they have, um, um, those applications have to be heard in a, um, depending on what kind of application they are, and that's what's in our ordinances, so we would have to change those ordinances on some of those.
Well, as Commissioner Morton's alluded to, you're actually easier to get public input through the B-PAC. They can come in here and sit, sit there and talk to us.
Absolutely, and we welcome it.
Public input through the Planning Commission, they gotta sign up, and if they don't sign up and, and talk to them at all, then they can't talk to us.
Right.
Well, well, I think is very, very, um, very important not to confuse B-PAC with substitute for the public. Because they all have special interests, it's designed to represent the special interests that use the Department of the.
That's right.
And it's, it's an appropriate committee to have because we need that feedback on how we're serving our customers. That's totally different from a planning commission that has some very specific statutory responsibilities. Now, how, the efficiency of it, that, that, that's maybe, that's a whole different issue. But they've got some separate, separate, uh, recommendations by law that, that have been given to them in terms of, as you mentioned, um, the comprehensive plan and zoning and the requests that come for changes as people wanna do things differently than what the, what the plans say.
That also affects where they appeal their decisions, if they don't like their decisions, where their appeals go as well. You know, whether it goes to our board or to Superior Court.
Yeah, well, just because people show up at a meeting does not mean they represent, quote, the public. Not most, most people can't come to evening meetings, so that eliminates it, it's very difficult to get a real, a real, uh, accurate reading of the public. The best we can do is
Well.
Kinda using our own anecdotes and our experiences, people that we talk to, help.
Well, I know the Planning Commission knows the developer guy by, by name, they're, they're, they're buddies, they don't know a lot of the public. Um, and a lot of what we ask them to do is copy these, the county has adopted some controls. And those are, those are things that says we may ask them to do. So there may be some things on there that I think we don't need to ask them to do anymore, at least that's my, my opinion, so I'd like to see those. I, it, there's just no reason in my mind why it can't be more efficient, this simple thing about one foot to three foot, and it's gonna be a six months process. There's no need for that nonsense.
And that's what we were trying to do, is make it less restrictive for the builder.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and why you didn't tell them that the Commissioner, you, you'd already brought that to Commissioners' attention, I, I'm not, not sure. Maybe you did in private, but it wasn't in public, I, I sit in there and I, I try to not impose on those things, but I was darn close to getting up there and doing it on that one. The other thing, uh, the only thing I, I caution on is, uh, we appointed a person to the B-PAC that also sits on the Planning Commission, and that was done while I was, I was gone. You probably know that was a person that I probably would have spoke against, uh, and so I find that a little, uh, frustrating that, uh, that was done, but.
Who was that?
Uh, Erica Rodman.
I didn't know that, and.
We sat together right in that second pew right there, when she, uh, made a comment and I turned and I said, you gotta be kidding me. You knew I would have had some issues with, with her.
On that comment, I get, I know what you're talking about, yes. Um, we thought it would be good to have a person from Planning Commission and B-PAC, kind of a voice for possibly both. To hear from both, you know, both sides, and I think the, our, the other two were fine with that, so I apologize you weren't part of that conversation.
Yeah, I see we have the ability to take people off of that too.
You can. And we can change that structure too, if the board so wishes.
Okay, I'll stop harping, I just, uh, I guess my, my point is, things need to get more efficient, and, and I'm not and we need to look at ways to make that, that happen. Most of everything they do has to come to us one way or the other. And so maybe there's some things that should be direct and, and get it done a lot quicker than, than spending months. Going back and forth between these two, two places and, and, and figuring that out.
I hear you.
Okay.
Hear you. The board have anything else?
All right, uh, I know we're over, so we do have quite a few of, I, I would say, housekeeping updates for the board. We'll start with Susan, we're gonna go a little out of order, and from our list. Uh, first thing that Susan's going to talk about is the Camelot Reservoir Roof.
So on the agenda this week, uh, is the execution of the Camelot Reservoir Roof Project. Uh, that project was awarded on eight, one to Slate Co. It is, uh, for the replacement of the Camelot roof, adding fencing and repainting that reservoir. Currently, the roof is damaged, and this will put a nice new roof on it, so we can continue moving forward. Uh, the other item that I have on the board's agenda is the resolution to start the process for vacation vacating Oswalt, the end of Oswalt Lane. Oswalt Lane serves two homes and then beyond it, it serves. Oswalt Lane serves two homes and then beyond it, it serves forest land. Warehouser and Sierra Pacific. We have been working with Warehouser and Sierra Pacific since pre pandemic to get this moving. They have issues with people driving back there, dumping trash. So they came forward to ask us if they could, we could vacate the end of it so they can put a gate further down at the end of the property. So we're going to be vacating basically from where the power lines, the BPA power lines are to the back is the proposal. They did donate land. We had that turnaround that we worked with them to construct at the end of where we're going to vacate it. So this is just the first step in the process for us to go ahead and.
It's, it's not a BPA access route also, or?
Of the, to get back to the lines. So we're going to vacate it right about where the lines are. So the BPA can still drive up Oswalt and get to the lines.
You said it has two houses that doesn't affect these folks.
It does not affect these folks. There are three private property owners besides Sierra Pacific and Warehouser back there. They have been working with them. This is why the process has taken so long to grant easements through their property so they can continue to access it. So those easements will be put in place and everybody will still have access.
Sounds like my place, it's an easement through, well, it used to be IP, now Sierra Pacific front said, yeah.
Those are the two items I have.
Used to be Warehouser.
Warehouser originally.
And then they sold it to Long Bell.
Long.
And Long Bell sold it to IP.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next, we will bring up Sean Rowey to talk about the rest of the items. And we'll start with the ecology grant letter.
Morning Commissioners. Sean Rowey, Public Works. First want to talk to you about an ecology grant opportunity that we have. This is similar to the grant that was approved last week for the Health Human Services. This is actually the other half of that grant. This is what we like to call the Los, La Sipa, the Local Solid Waste Financial Assistant Grant. This grant is in total for $363,000. This is a two-year grant. We use these dollars to fund our household hazardous waste program and part of our rural recycling program. The dollars on this grant are provided on a fixed value and a per capita value. And then we additionally applied for any excess funds on this grant. And it'll be from seven, one, twenty twenty-three to six, thirty, twenty twenty-five. If there's any questions on this.
Does it come with any stipulations that?
None that I'm aware.
Cause cost to our people more.
No, I think how residents may see a benefit, they may see, we're trying to work on our recycling station. So we were awarded part of this grant, a section of it actually to do some upgrades at some of our recycling stations. And we're using some of it for our proposed Longview site. So hopefully to the everyday person, they'll see it in the form of recycling center upgrades. And then also we're looking at trash pickup from, for some of the roadside trash paying for that.
Okay, so this is specific to, to trying to upgrade our recycling and to do some other.
Yeah, just a portion of it. The majority of it, as Sean mentioned, is household hazardous waste. So a lot of, we also do, I think for a year by the different districts, we do household hazardous waste events. So we have them in some of our jurisdictions and those are free events for people to drop off their paint and batteries and, you know, things of that nature. So that's another, that's actually a large portion of it is the household hazardous waste fees that we pay as a county. Those get reimbursed by this grant. That's the majority of it. Okay, so the next item we will talk about is an item we brought forward to talk about previously. And it's that solid waste management plan that just won't, won't go away. So Mike had, Mike Moss had sent some highlights last week talking about, again, the general overview of this plan. The last plan we have in place was from 2012. We had worked on it for quite a while and it's supposed to be updated every five years. So you can tell, simple math is 2012 was a lot longer than five years ago. And so we're working on some of these updates. We had, we did have some items that came up during our update, like the crop plan. And I don't know if Sean wants to talk about that at all, but that is one thing that added a little bit more time to this update because we had to incorporate that, been working with Maul Foster Longy, with Maul Foster Longy on that as well.
And so, yeah, I'll just add on. Ecology has been giving us more pressure to get this completed. And we do have it on the agenda for tomorrow as the consent item. This is a requirement of the state for all of our grant funding through ecology.
We've seen it a few times, yeah, as it's come through the process.
Yeah, at, at the time tomorrow, it'd be good for someone to just say what the purpose of the plan is. If there are any highlights from, assume the baseline is the old plan and what's different than the new plan.
Yeah, and we'll have the, the two-page FQA available for citizens as well.
Okay, all right, our next item is the tenant way mechanical electrical services on call agreement. Let's go ahead and let Sean talk about it.
So we talked about this last week as well. Just wanted to follow up with you. It is on the agenda tomorrow as agenda item number nine. I just want to see if there's any additional questions on this process. Or if, I don't know if Commissioner Doll has heard about this one yet. Yeah, so the agreement is for an amount not to exceed $75,000 for a one-year period. We went out to bid on this. We received two bids back on it. The lowest bidder was Hamer Electrical. This would be for the tenant way closed landfill for any electrical or mechanical needs throughout the year that arise. This is mainly going to be pumps, piping and blowers and things of that sort.
All right, so our next item is to talk about a Lewis contract via interlocal agreement with Lewis County to accept, continue to accept their waste.
So we have discussed this in the past. This is an interlocal agreement with Lewis County and Lewis County Disposal District number one to continue to provide disposal services at Headquarters landfill. This is a ongoing agreement with a pretty easy out terms for both parties, just 180 days notice with continuous annual increases associated with it.
Any questions on it?
I think that, that one really is just kind of agreement between us. It's, yeah, I think it's pretty equitable on both sides, so.
So our last item is the surplus of, of the manufactured home at Storm Road. This has been in the works for quite some time. We finally have it up for auction through public surplus. And we put that on our social media accounts and shared it with the community. We had a couple of people interested. We've communicated it with them as well. So that will be up for auction on September 18th through that week, through September 22nd. We also have two opportunities for the public to walk the location and the home with some, I guess, like a, a guide. Anna Lunday will be there on September 6th and September 13th from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM to allow people from the public to walk the manufactured home. One thing that we've had to definitely put some information out there is that it does not include the land. I think there was a lot of interest, of course, in the land and the, and the manufactured home, but it does not include the land. It's specific to the manufactured home. So those are a lot of the questions we've been fielding. And that's all we have that for that, for this today.
I know it was asked, but just to refresh my memory, make sure it's, it's right. We'll sell it, but where they take it, that's up to them. They gotta, they're responsible for pulling it off of there and doing all that.
Yes, and we've given them 180 days to do so. We do recognize that it is difficult right now to find manufactured home haulers in the area. Just, we've just been hearing that a lot from the community that it's difficult to find. So where they take it and, and how that happens is definitely up to that individual.
Were the Alexanders on your list of locals to?
Yes, actually, Mr. Alexander was contacted and he was also under the impression that it included the land. So that was, yeah. That's all I have.
Yeah. I was just looking through if there's anything else.
This is Monster Monday. I'd like an executive session beginning immediately, performance of an employee, 15 minutes.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioners.
Thanks.
The board is extending the executive session for a period of five minutes until 12:48.
Yeah, it's been a